So, who's gonna call this meeting? And I guess, who's gonna first figure out who needs to be in this DOT meeting? And who's gonna call it? Is that...
I'll contact the folks who I've spoken with before at the DOT to find out about that meeting. To see, has that ship completely sailed? I don't mind asking about that.
Right, so we wanna talk about Zero Place in particular still, but also the MBR in general. So we need to make sure...
Both, both. And using the point that Eve brought up, like, we need these folks at DOT to think about this as a new zone, where we're trying to make it feel more residential and less highway.
And I don't know if the county was at that meeting, but if they weren't at that previous meeting, they should probably get added to this one?
Were they at the previous meeting? The county, like, the county planning department?
Either way, let's just make sure they're on the list. Really?
Yeah, but we're trying to see, was he at this meeting?
And I would tell you, the counties control, or a large part of control, a lot of the federal transportation dollars. So, any grant, federal grant money that's available, the counties help control that through their MPO process. So it's good to have them in the role.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. So I'll look at that. I'll try to make a phone call.
So, we didn't really... Can we just do the parking thing via email? And maybe so we can just craft some language that we can plug in here?
Fine.
So, parking, I'll do.
You know what our building inspector has brought up? Is this idea of limiting units so that they only have four bedrooms? Village-wide? You know, he was saying that that would help. Yeah. He was saying that would help with a lot of his enforcement challenges.
Wait, back up. Four bedrooms, what?
Four-bedroom units.
Your private home, or private office?
Ever? I'm confused.
That might be difficult. You know, that's discriminatory.
I think it also is something that you can take up outside the MBR zone.
This is why I'm bringing this up, 'cause I wanna have that conversation with Bryant and see if we should... 'Cause maybe there's something that he was suggesting that could be baked into this that would then help with what you're talking about. Like, if you had, like, an 11-bedroom thing. Like, how do we get that parking ratio correct?
Right.
'Cause he was talking...
So, a lot of places, and I should know, we do.
I'll do that as well. I'll...
Are you talking about...
Since I seem to, like, I'm imagining that Bryant might have some guidance for us about this topic that might help us with some of the parking ratios.
Okay. I mean, a lot of code differentiates between a rooming house. What, you know, like, I think number of bedrooms you then turn into a roomer? You have rooming house?
We don't allow rooming houses anyhow.
Those are different. I know, I remember. But, yeah, but...
So why don't we...
We sort of have them.
Yeah, we have them. They're grandfathered in.
Yeah.
As long as people are volunteering, I think Joe and I could look at the design recommendations that came out of the gateway. And, um, sorry about that. And we'll report back to you.
I would hope that everybody looks at it.
We can give you a draft, too.
Yeah, okay. We should all, yeah. And what we would like to plot in.
I like that idea. Have you guys taken a look at those design standards?
We'd be happy to do that.
Seeing if you think there's things...
I mean, Joe would be happy to do that. And I'd be happy to look at what she does.
Well, you just volunteered her, so I hope she's happy about it.
Well, I mean, that's what we were aiming for in the beginning, because that's what the law wants a lot. Well, I don't know if we can steal it from the town of New Pauls.
Why?
Well...
Well, put it this way. We don't have to use it word for word.
I don't see what the issue is.
Some consultants own their own products, not in town. I know the county, but in case...
But once it becomes law, you can steal anybody's law?
That belongs to that consultant. So, if you're gonna borrow it, you have to change a few words. It's like, if you borrow a picture, you have to make some...
This is an interesting question, though. Once it's in law, you can steal anybody's law?
Once it's in law, but that report won't be in law.
Okay, but I just wanted to make sure that I was clear on that part. Once it's in law, you can, but right now, we can't. But we could ask. So, do you want me to ask?
And we can still, we can still look at it.
Let's look at it first and see what we want to steal.
Okay, so we can specifically say, we would like to steal law.
No, we don't have to say we're stealing it.
Obviously, I sound like my daughter. I have a 15-year-old daughter. That's why I say things like "obvi." Obviously, we always say steal.
Let's take a look at it. We'll see where we're gonna go. It may be simple, it may be...
It may not really apply in all...
Yeah, yeah, no. No, and I think I said to others here, I like, you know, 75 to 80 percent. So, we'll take the parts that we like. But I would encourage everybody else at the table, just because we're all residents of the town as well, to take a look at it.
Okay, well, we'll give you at least our first look at that.
Okay. And...
I don't wanna pass up an opportunity to point out that the independent firm which served the town of New Pauls for many, many years and sold their business to a... Thank you. Has regular practice copyrighted much of the information. All the maps that were created for the town of New Pauls over a period of, over a decade, were copyrighted and owned by a private company. Even though the town of New Pauls paid for that information. So I'd wanna make sure there's nothing in this...
That's fine.
We just talked about it at a public meeting, so it's out there.
We can, we can deal with that.
But, yeah.
The ideas are well worth contemplating.
A workshop, did you say, in two weeks?
That's for a single hauler. Do you wanna come to that?
Is that a threat? No, I don't want to come.
We have another meeting. Okay, we have another meeting on the 10th. And then there's a workshop on the 17th. And then another, at seven days, we have another meeting.
So we'll...
We're gonna work on the parking by now. And then we're gonna look at the permitted and non-permitted at the next workshop.
Yes.
Thank you.
And, okay.
Let me ask, uh, my colleagues, if it's realistic for us to set a goal?
I thought we did, this month.
Well, to set a new goal that we would have this finished in January.
I meant January.
Yes, yeah, let's recommit to that. I think if we have two meetings in the village board, you have the possibility of discussing this at a workshop meeting. 'Cause there are people who wanna do business in this zone. And they wanna develop projects.
Yeah, 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 I understand. So, actually, I had thought about this whole DOT meeting thing. I don't want that whole thing to hold up.
Well, it doesn't, because we've only got a recommended streetscape in there. But that could be, you know, that... We wanted to use the optional streetscape, which is the, not the side way. You've got the protected bike lane, but the other side of the picture. And that was our proposal for areas north of Triptide.
Okay, you had me at, no, it's not gonna interrupt, but, okay, cool.
Yeah, and again, the DOT meeting is really like three things. Gonna have a future on the north end, a current on the HWD 32 Mulberry Empire State. And so, moving forward with the zoning, depending on how you wanna treat that north end, that's the only thing that could get held up by more of a longer-term meeting.
Good.
All right?
Gracias.
Thank you.
Okay, so, the next item we've had was Millbrook Preserve rent plan and MOA. So our planner had a meeting scheduled with the Millbrook Preserve, Inc. and the Walker Valley Land Trust that needed to be rescheduled. So, we're gonna wait until the next time for that discussion. Security deposit return law. Did we have an update on that?
We do, I do. So...
Carol Lee's asking to be excused.
Unless you wanna say something?
No, I was gonna stay for Millbrook, but I don't think that means anything.
Yeah, nothing. Bye, thanks, bye. Okay, so, last we spoke of security deposit law. We had asked, we had talked about how it was maybe in need of an immediate automatic... I don't wanna use the word fine.
Something that would make it punitive if someone...
Irrespective of context. Just missing the deadline would be punitive. So, if you look at page five in the middle, I went to Will, the village attorney, and said, you know, we'd like an automatic penalty, that's the word I'm looking for, if somebody doesn't hit the 21-day deadline for either returning the deposit or for giving that itemized list of why. So that was the language that he added.
And Katie, in Will's email, he mentioned that he wasn't... He didn't seem very convinced that the judge would actually be rendering this. Did you follow up on that?
I had a conversation with him, and he said, you know, also, the intent here is to not clog up the courts, so... Or at least, that should always be our intent. So, I sort of think that's where he was... I don't know if that answers, it doesn't answer your question. But... There is, remember, we had this conversation about how it's like not a fine? So it's not like you get a parking ticket, and then you just pay that parking ticket? Because it's not like the penalty is going to us as the village. It goes to the tenant. So there has to be a place for that to happen. And the only place that that can happen is in the courts. So, we can't tell a judge what to do. We can only give a judge parameters. So, that's Will's crystal ball, saying, here, I'll give you this language, but I don't have super confidence that judges are... We're not handcapping to judges to do this. We're just giving them the wherewithal to do it if they so choose. I don't know another procedural remedy for that outside of the courts. If, I think this is the best we can do, according to our attorney's advice, if we want to say to the judge... 'Cause remember, the rest of that paragraph is about context, right? That the judge can use his... He can discern whether or not the documentation or their good faith was made in terms of documenting how much these damages were, so that there would be a reduction in the security deposit. That the judge can look at a particular landlord's history and to inform whether or not the amount or any travel damages that'll be awarded. We're basically just saying to the judge, we'd like you, no matter what, if they miss this 21-day law... 21-day deadline to, at a minimum, be liable for 25 percent of the entire security deposit. Sorry.
Did I like what I saw?
You like it? It gives you more teeth?
So, do we wanna go ahead and set a public hearing? Since it seems like we have the law that we want?
Yep, I'm for that.
I'm for that.
Anything you want? Any feeling that the landlord-tenant relations committee would...
Due to quorum issues, haven't been able to meet in a while. We're scheduled to meet tomorrow. Don't know if it's gonna happen.
Okay.
So... As far as, I'd love to say, let's get feedback, but I don't wanna hold things up, and then it's another month.
Yeah.
And we're...
If we meet tomorrow, definitely come back with feedback at our first January meeting, but there's no guarantee on that. I'm sure what you're gonna say, Katie?
It doesn't preclude us from hearing from them while we hear from everybody else.
No, no, that's why I said, I don't wanna hold things up.
Yeah. I'm agreeing.
So the hearing is next meeting?
Sure. I don't know if we have the time. Is the time to do it for next meeting?
We could set it for the 17th.
The 10th is pretty close. I don't know if we have...
24th.
What about when people are here?
That's true, too.
There's that. Well, while we do the...
The 23rd?
So we can open it, then?
Well, I'd like to avoid the whole, let's have this open for a month and a half or two months thing. We already went down that road, and it didn't work out too well. Maybe...
Never know what it will be.
I'd like to retract my previous statement where I said I don't wanna slow this up, because thanks to the infinite wisdom of our clerk, it does make sense to wait until people are here. And I don't wanna do it two days after people get back, and they don't even have a chance to, like, hear about it. But maybe we can open the, set the public hearing for the 21st. That way, we know we have enough time after they get back before we can actually take action on it. Public hearing on the 21st, and then we do something in the first meeting in February.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how long we're gonna keep it open. It depends on what we get, right? So, I would want, at a minimum, to have it for two meetings if we're opening the first week of classes. I don't think it hurts us to open the first week of classes.
Well, no, that's what I just said.
24th.
I'm agreeing.
If we can open it, then, and then it gives people time to hear about it and get feedback to it.
Okay.
I motion to set a public hearing for the security deposit law on...
Jan 24th, 7 o'clock, Village Hall.
That.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, the other thing was, we had this clarification on landlord-tenant relations council quorum.
Yes, so this was a... Part of the question came up with quorum is whether we are required to have a balanced quorum. If there are no tenants that show up, and it's all landlords and the neutral party, and they're voting on things, it would be a very skewed representation of what's supposed to be a balanced board. And the challenge then becomes, if you're requiring quorum to be balanced, then how do you ever get quorum if you have any absences? And one of the meetings that was canceled by the chair of the LTRC because she had this quorum concern, would have been, I believe, we should have been able to meet, because we had a majority of members there. But she was hesitant to do so without enough student representation. And as such, we've been kind of pancapped for a couple of months.
Well, it's also, it's only a council. It's not a commission or a board.
Right.
So I think the idea behind this council getting together is that you kinda have to have meetings that you can depend on, so that people can show up and not worry that much about the composition. Because if we try to get the composition right, it's kinda like a farmer's market. You know, we have the farm stands that are gonna draw the other people. You know, without enough stickiness or interest in these regular meetings, it's just never gonna happen.
So, just so I'm clear, in our code, it's just a simple quorum of the membership now? And the issue is that it could be biased, because we have these particular seats?
Correct.
So, are you suggesting a remedy that the quorum specifications need to...
I think we just need to have a policy in place. And then that should cover us. You know, you're thinking more about us.
I think that's, this came from Alberta, but yeah. It's definitely kind of... So we don't need to change the code, but it would just be a practice of this board, because they recognize that...
You wanna make it clear to the chair, who is running the landlord chain, that they don't have to wait to have a certain composition? That if they have X number of bodies in the room, they can have a meeting?
But voting on things is different.
But it's also a council, like, any of their... Anything they deliberate on doesn't really have any legal way to it anyways.
Right, but I think it's good practice if you're, if you have two distinct groups that are supposed to be represented, then if one group is not represented, you wouldn't take a vote.
Well, we've seen how well that's, this is, you know... This council struggled to exist for years. We got it back on its feet, and now it's like flailing to exist.
It's hanging on by a thread. And it's, quite frankly, it's always the tenants. You know, there's such a high turnover of tenants on the board, that that's where it's falling through. The landlords are sticking around. It's just the tenants aren't showing up. They're not honoring their commitments. And it's creating a challenge. And I, it's like Tim said, they're not making any laws. There's nothing that they can do that, like, what can they possibly do with an unbalanced board? Make a recommendation to us, and then we'll say, yeah, that was an unbalanced board? Like, they can't do anything lasting or permanent. And I think, given the challenges this board, this council has seen for years, I think it's best that we just have a policy in place that allows them to meet and get things done. And then if we see a problem with it, you know, happening because of this policy, we can always change it. But I would like to encourage that we have meetings before this council is gone.
Are there just too many meetings?
It's once a month. Or were you gonna add on?
I'm saying, I'm saying, eight once a month is too much. Well, I think there's incentive for landlords to be involved. It's their business. You know, I mean, this is one of the ways that they do commerce. So it would, they'd have a vested interest, and a proper one. You know, a proper interest in being aware and having some impact on how that business works in this community. The tenants, you know, unless someone doesn't, hasn't had their security deposit returned, they don't have the impetus to be involved on a regular basis. So it's, I think it's inherent and built in. I do think it's disingenuous, and I'm not, again, there's no criticism of anyone or their intent, but to have a landlord-tenant relations committee where it's okay to have meetings with just landlords, and it's not because of bad intent, it's just because of dynamics that was discussed.
Well, you can't get a quorum with only landlords. If you had three landlords and the neutral party there, then you could get four. But you can't get a quorum of just landlords.
It's okay.
So I mean, I know that's not ideal, but just for clarification's sake.
I think the other thing that you're trying to do by having some folks show up on a regular basis is to create a stickiness, so that the tenants have a place to go when there is an issue. 'Cause it's definitely not perfect if it has too many landlords. But it doesn't exist at all if it doesn't exist. Like, there's no place for anyone to go. So, you know, Dennis likes to tease me and say that I overuse, what's that phrase? Don't let...
Don't let the perfect be the enemy of the true.
Yeah, so I think this is one of those examples.
It's very Obama. He didn't say it first. He used to say it all, huh?
Absolutely, absolutely.
I think it was like Voltaire or somebody crazy.
Thank you, yes, it was, it was.
I tried. On the recruitment end, I will shoot an email to Erica Wagner, who does the volunteerism office on campus. And she can do it to her mass email list of something like hundreds of students.
That'd be great.
I also was chatting with the SA vice president at that little mixer on Town Gown thing. And I told her I would send her some volunteer opportunity stuff. I was in particular talking to her about landlord-tenant openings. And she also said that I could come to SA and talk about it. Or I asked if I should come to SA and talk about it. And I'll ask her if she thinks that's a good idea. So, maybe now's a good time, you know, starting off the year. Like I said at the beginning of the meeting, maybe we can grab some people with some New Year's resolutions who wanna get engaged in their communities. It is... Am I allowed to say this? I can say this? No, I'm gonna say that. Yeah. Any other, I mean, I know Alex has been sending letters to the editor. Oh, let's send it to the Oracle as well. Did you send that one to the Oracle?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't know if we, do we wanna do one? I mean, if we're targeting students, do we wanna focus on just landlord-tenant? Rather than giving them the long learning list?
I'd like to find some non-student tenants. That way, maybe we can get some lasting members on the board that aren't gonna turn over a roof for a while. There's plenty of tenants in this community that aren't just at the college. I mean, I'd be happy to get anybody at this point, because we'd have a full board. But I don't wanna just have a narrow tunnel vision focused on students.
Right, they're just the ones that are easier to get to via, you know, the paper and the, you know, the college paper.
Could we get notices out to some of the apartment complexes in town?
That's a great idea.
They're all tenants, and there's hundreds of them, all in the same place.
Yeah. And let's just think amongst ourselves, people we know that live in apartments that, you know, aren't homeowners. I just thought of a few in my head now.
Certainly, Deputy Mayor, former Deputy Mayor, if he hasn't been to enough meetings in the past year.
Although, she's gonna apply for affordable housing position.
Damn.
Well, I don't know.
They can make a motion that we institute a policy that the landlord-tenant relation council quorum is a simple majority of members regardless of composition.
So what is that, though? That's a, you're moving a policy?
They don't have a quorum. Like, they don't know if it's three or five, or their seven, was like part of the problem.
Right, so what are we moving right now, though?
Quorum is formed under the board?
We're, so we're...
I don't think we need to do a resolution.
Yeah, right, so we're clarifying the existing law or how one might interpret it. We're not writing the law, we're not augmenting the law.
We're acknowledging it.
We're acknowledging it, so it's clear. Okay? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I can't go for that.
You cannot go for that?
No.
Okay.
It's okay.
So 4-1. Next item, long-term parking permit application changes suggested by the clerk.
I think that her suggestion is entirely...
I think this, or was this something that we had talked about several months ago, but we weren't going to make the change until first of the year? Let's just circle back on Jan 10th and find out. But I think that's why this is on this agenda. You may have created this agenda several months ago. Because this might have to do with the permits, where we changed the sign. I actually went down there one night and took the sign down manually.
Oh, that's what it was.
Yep.
I did make this agenda a half over.
Yeah.
Have we, have things gotten better in the municipal parking lot?
Much, much better. Once we fixed the...
Okay. Are ticketers happier and not...
The sign is truly clear and good now.
Yeah.
Yeah, we cleaned it up a lot. And then, okay, we can double-check. There's still a problem with the way that lot works on the busiest of weekends. But I don't know that there's an easy fix. Okay. Don, you were gonna give us a crosswalk something?
Yes, well, last we talked about this, I guess at the start, the village department of public works was really concerned about using the paint method, because they have a paint machine. They need to clean the machine for each different color. It would be very time-consuming and very labor-intensive. So, we researched a bunch of different ways that pride crosswalks have been done around the country. And there's, you know, there's a couple of dozen of them. And we had made the recommendation, DPW either put some sort of pigment in cement, we could use a powder to glaze bricks, and could use brightly colored bricks, or thermoplastic. And at the end of the day, given those three choices, they chose paint. They are gonna have to close the street for a day. It's the crosswalk that comes right, the parade goes through the parking lot that goes over to Hasbro Pier. So it'll be the, the street would be closed between the, what used to be the children's center, the Vanderberg Learning Center, and Hasbro Park for a bit more than a day. Thank you, yes. Yeah, well, like, 20 years ago, it was a children's center. And that would probably have to be closed for the day while they, while they apply the paint and clean the paint machine.
So you're doing one crosswalk?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So it's the crosswalk that goes east-west?
Uh, east-west, yes.
East-west and it's the one-
So right at the end of the parade before we enter the park, we'll walk across it.
Yeah, it's one of the more faded, faded away crosswalks. It's, it's, you know, it's in bad shape right now, so repainting it'll be good.
So we need to set it up.
Yeah, repainting it'll be good.
Do you know when the painting will occur?
Uh, the fundraising is gonna begin on February 27th, uh, which is the anniversary of the weddings, so we'll figure late March, early spring.
How much money do we need to-
Well, they just decided what material, so now we need to get a number from them.
Okay.
And we also need to get numbers to maintain it in future years.
Yep.
Because oftentimes you do something and when it needs to be maintained, uh, there's no money. So we're figuring that out and we should, uh, by February 27th, we'll have everyone's answers for all, all those questions. Um, I had emailed, looking at the next thing, uh, Brian Arms, the building department had put together a very long and, uh, and complete email on the processes one follows to get a certificate of occupancy and included, uh, I guess a process by which we can be confident the rec fees were being collected. I did email that to the, to the board. It did make it into the packet for this, uh, this discussion, but we're, I think we're done. I mean, we have, we have a procedure. Uh, all I did was take Brian's email and it links, this is where you collect to get this quorum, this is the phone number of the building department, this is the phone number of, you know, this is how you contact the planning and zoning secretary.
So this is just a, how it is now, how it works now?
Correct.
Did you do any analysis of good, bad, indifferent? I know that the planning board is now going through a sort of evaluation of, um, the same issues, so we should connect everybody.
Again, I was to attend the last planning board meeting or earlier one and wasn't able to make it, so, uh, yes, we will talk and work with them on that.
We haven't talked about it yet. Talked about it in the next meeting, it has been discussed now.
Okay, I saw a little bit of the newspaper about it.
Yeah, the next, this upcoming meeting is where we're talking about it.
I'll, I'll, I'll plan to be there. Um, I think what is it to do for this board? The planning board chair has made a good point that if we're going to demand that people pay for this recreation fee and we do want that to happen, we need to say what we're gonna use it for. What are our priorities? And I think the logical ones would be redoing Hasbrook Park playground and the pickleball courts, which we're hoping to get grant money for, but we may not and have not to as of yet. So I, I would say that if this board is to set priorities for what we want to use recreation fees for, for the community, I think those two items should be on the top of the list. They've been on our list for a while and I think that would, that would be a response to people who are saying, well, before we start collecting these things, we got something what they're using.
That's, that's not a heavy lift though. It's like we have a rail trail, we have Moreyella Pool, we have Hasbrook Park. We have a long list of things that we spend rec money on, so.
Well, it's-
If we had rec money, if, if we had been collecting rec fees over the last however many years that we should have or that we haven't, that's what we would be spending money on.
All right, so, but I can't remember now. It can only be used on capital, not on maintenance?
Can't be used on maintenance, or it could be, but our practice is not to do that.
It would be new stuff for the rail trail.
Or capital improvements.
Well, privately to me and publicly at a meeting, the planning board chair has articulated a desire that we clarify what that list is. And I think since, as you've mentioned Tim, we, it's, the information's known, let's just, let's just-
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. We can do it.
Yeah.
If it's that easy, we just have it as part of our little packet of this is what rec fees are, how you do it, why you do it.
So may I send the list of the top five items? My suggestion on top of my head to the board, you all can chime in and we can craft a list of what we would have as our priorities?
Yeah, I think our planner already has this list too.
Okay.
Oh, well, I want to redo it if it's already there.
All right, so can you get the list from Dave and then we can just add our next meeting?
Gotcha.
Review.
And, uh, as far as the standard operating procedure, getting a CO, I think that is pretty much, um, it's the first time that we've, we've seen that. Uh, the planning board chair said it'd be very helpful to the planning board to have that in place. So I'd like to actually move forward with taking some action on that, uh, show what we have come up with to the planning board. It's good to email to them, but have that as part of the discussion at the meeting and come up with out of this process, a firm plan for rec fees, collection and use, and also a, a written process, cohesive process for what people do to get a CO in this community. And one of the things they have to do if they have a CO is to pay the rec fees. That's part of the, part of the process. So that's where I'm going. Everybody okay with that?
All right, so have we checked that we can legally do that?
What, which that?
The, um, CO part, that you don't get your CO if you don't pay your rec fee.
Oh, we have heard, uh, we have heard anecdotally from people from other communities that that's how they do it. I haven't verified that personally, but-
So maybe it's a will question?
Um, I believe that was Guy Kepner who made that observation that many communities-
Yeah, well, I think we should just check that we, I hope the answer is yes, but just to cover our butts.
Right, okay.
It's technical terms.
So wait, can I just ask for a point of clarification?
Sure.
How that is all works, cause in the-
You gotta come and use the mic.
Sorry. So, planning board is planning on discussing this, but I guess I'm not sure what is in the purview of the planning board and what is not in the purview of the planning board.
You're just making a recommendation to our board about how you think, you know, it's like the memo that you, that you circulated.
Good idea, okay.
It could be in that form.
Okay, cause that-
And then we'll make a decision as to whether we want to make changes to our existing code.
Great, okay. Cause that actually does impact that whole idea of sort of a wish list, because it may not be relevant that a wish list applies depending on how the planning board sort of perceives it. Okay.
I think that if we can separate it into like those process issues, but then there's also the why we do this and when we do this, which, um, would, would, we definitely would want to hear from you for both, but in particular for planning board, how, how can we make this process more effective? We certainly would love to hear from you as well in terms of the substance of it, the why, the when, not just the how. But I haven't read all the stuff myself, but I can differentiate it in those two ways.
I think that's clear. Thanks.
Grassy.
Okay, so the, the next topic is this-
About the rec fee document that was circulated earlier, I had a question about, at the close of the year, any recreational fee collected that are unused by the village were returned to the developers. Does it have to be used or earmarked for use?
This was, you're just reading from the draft that you've circulated?
That's what needs to-
I think that's just a draft.
Yeah.
I mean, it's interpretation of what the state's policy was, but that gets us into the draft.
I, I would be, like, I, I think money should be collected, that should go into a pot and then as there are needs, then that pot is drawn upon. But, you know, we're doing an awful job of collecting the fees, the idea that we're gonna then collect them and then redistribute them based on whether we're doing, like I-
Yeah, I would-
Game to wrap my mouth.
I wouldn't support that.
If we have a $20,000 project and we have $18,000 in fees, we keep saving them until we get $20,000, we don't, we don't give it back.
Yeah, we have a million dollars worth of projects and $43,000 in the bank.
But I think something would be a bad idea to do the earmarking thing, to just say on an annual basis, this is the amount that we have and this is the projects when we, you know, hit the, the target, we'll spend it on this pending us changing our mugs.
Yeah, I think to Tim's point, we've done such a bad job of collecting it, but then to put it back out and earmark, like just, let's just put it in a pot. We know we're gonna have needs, especially in a community where we're surrounded by recreational needs.
We're never going to have enough money from rec fees to pay for any of our rec needs.
Exactly.
Not even close. So this next item, rental listing, uh, so we've discussed this in terms of what exactly do we want to distribute as far as information publicly? And we're trying to provide some info about info that our building department collects in terms of the rental registration process to empower the folks who rent in our community. So we're trying to decide on what info should be shared and how it should be shared. Someone wanna comment?
Yeah, I'll, I'll get into this. You know, we have been, uh, we have been advised or educated in a, in a public comment about the difficulties of tenants taking action against landlords, uh, that they have to take action against the legal entity that rents the property. And, um, it's my strong feeling that in order to empower tenants who are, are young, inexperienced, who are not steeped in the, in the ways of business, that that information needs to be included on anything we, we post online. It's certainly good to put the names and the addresses of the, of landlords anecdotally. This is, you know, if you want to knock on their door, here's where they are. But I think if, you know, as a generality, if you have four students renting a place, one of them's gonna be on the lease, maybe all four of them will be on the lease, but one of them will have the document. And if a year later someone needs to take some action, are they gonna go online and, and do it the easy way? Are they gonna find which one of the four has the document, find what closet it's in or what suitcase it's in and, and find the legal entity there? I, I just think if we're trying to empower tenants getting the information, if you have legal business to do with this landlord, here's the legal entity and the legal address. Because I could be, now I'm current living on Milrod Road and rented out an apartment. My apartment could be, you know, New Walk LLC Apartments. It might not be me and, and, you know, legally, so.
But, but isn't that handled by, when you've complete the rental registration form, you're not completing a person, you, you're, the landlord is the, the entity that is renting out the property. So it's, you know, ABC landlords LLC, that is what gets filled out on rental registration forms.
So Will, the village attorney, was, um, cautioned us against the addresses. I can't remember the landlord addresses, why. I'm not sure that that's a reliable source. I, I think it's a good, something we should do down the road. I don't think it should stop us from what my understanding of the original attempt was. So let me just back up for one second. My understanding was that we get the addresses that are the registered properties so that, um, tenants can just do a simple check that their property that they are renting, um, is registered with the village and that, that is really important to know because when you're registered, that triggers the inspection process. So in my conversations, setting aside the landlord legal address issue for the moment, um, uh, in my conversations with Brian, he thinks simply putting up the, the, the rental address, um, the landlord name and the result of their last inspection is a good place to start. And we can do what you want to do later if we can figure out how to do it. I'm not sure the information that we have in our database is that legal address. Um, so we want to make sure that it is, but I think as a start, I'd like to suggest that we just do the rental address, the landlord name and the result of the last inspection. So that A, people can check that their property is registered so they know that it's in the inspection process. And B, when, you know, you go to rent a property, um, and you can, and you don't see it on that list, you can then call up the building department, department and say, hey, I was gonna rent 666 Main Street, but I don't see it's on your list. Can you look it up in your database and see what's up with that? And then we can then add it and we can reach out to that landlord and say, hey, we know you're a rental, you need to register and get inspected.
No, I think that's all good. I think it's very easy to ask a landlord to also say, forget the address, just DBA, doing business as, what is the name of your entity? And have that there as well.
It is, I've seen the forums.
Let someone Google it and, you know.
With some high school kids who are doing another related project and I just, the data that I'm seeing and, and I don't know, Alex, you've been looking at it too, I, I, if, if we are going to be saying, this is where you get that information, we need to make sure that the information we have is actually, actually accurately that. That's all I'm saying.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I don't know that we can say that unequivocally at this point, but I do know that we can put up a simple list with just those three fields to get the party started.
Well, I just think four items is just simple, we can get.
Yeah, you want your, you want your, you know, it's kind of like garbage in, garbage out, we're, we're, I don't know, I just, let's work on it, but let's first do what we have now.
A list of four, sure, sounds great.
[laughing].
We agree.
Well, Brian and the lawyer don't agree with that strategy, so.
I also thought that the, the idea, and I think this is what you were trying to say, Katie, is that if someone is looking to rent a property and they look at this list and they see that the address is not part of the list, then they can go to that landlord and say, how come you're not registered with the village? You know, in addition to contacting our building department, like, I think there's some benefit to that as well.
Yeah, and, you know, uh, Brian ran me a list, um, and there's about 350 properties in the database that have been inspected in the last year. And we know that we have way more than 350 rental properties in the village. So we need to, we need to get them in the system so we can start inspecting those properties. I, I think we should continue to brainstorm ways to get all our landlords to register a lot.
Yeah, I think the most important thing is to get all the properties registered. I, I think there's a secondary benefit and that we would be providing info if there was a situation where a tenant needed to pursue an action against the landlord, but as far as I'm concerned, that's, that's a secondary benefit. The primary benefit is to, to get property owners to make sure they're registered, make sure they're following the law.
Well, I wouldn't vote against that. I guess, you know, originally Dennis and I were tasked with creating this list and I was willing and able to provide that additional information. Uh, if you all don't want it, that's okay, but you all had asked us to do it and I would be willing to do that and give and provide the additional information. So I feel like I'm-
What do you mean additional information?
About the legal entity and, you know.
Let's put it on the, on the plan. Let's get this up and then let's figure out how we can remedy Brian's and the attorney's concerns about that.
Well, since other people are doing it, I'm not doing it anymore.
Okay, well, Alex was under the understanding that we tasked her to do it. So, you know, I'm fine with all hands on deck, but.
So let's get up and we can get up as soon as we can get up.
Awesome.
Okay, so the next item you added, Don, was water sourcing procedures?
Yeah, the shade, shade trade, geez, okay. Environmental Policy Commission met the day after our second, uh, 2nd November meeting. I emailed this to everyone on the, uh, on the 28th of November. Uh, this is what was asked for. It didn't make it in the packet, uh, but essentially, uh, all the blue font is the, I just was low on paper notes, I'm sorry, I'm on copy. Blue font was the clarification which was requested by this board in terms of, under what conditions will certain things happen? You know, specifically what has to happen, what, what triggers this and what triggers that? So this is, um, this is the recommendation to this board of what, um, what the procedures that the environmental policy board and, and this trustee have, have put forward. And I'd like to, you know, it's been floating around since last April or so in various, in various forms. I would like to get to the point where we approve this and, uh, so if we could make sure this is in the next packet, uh, I did email the copy, it was like 6:25 this evening. If we could get this in the next packet, pass the discussion and try to actually pass this, um, at one of our next meetings, you know, it would be a good thing. The train's moving in terms of our exploration and it'd be good to have the procedures in place before we, we get in a situation where we need to, need to utilize them.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I completely spaced out.
It's okay, it's almost, almost 10 o'clock at night, I don't want to, you know, have long conversations, but I would like to get this in a, in a situation, in a circumstance where we can take action on it, you know, soon. And the environmental policy board moved their meeting this week to tomorrow night. So if anyone has, looks at your email and has any input or questions or concerns or complaints, um, I think it is 7:30 tomorrow night that the policy board will be meeting and I can bring any comments to them at that time.
So when it says there will be a general informational presentation and then there's also gonna be an additional public informational session, so those are two meetings that take place before 72-hour pump tests?
There was a general informational presentation to the board recently on the overall issue, the overall overarching issue of water investigation, any general questions, any big plans, big picture issues, um, for the entire community. It wasn't done at a time in a way where community members had enough notice or, you know, were able to, to attend. So the desire has always been to have one general information session with the hydrologists for the entire community on the issue of water investigation. Secondly, when a specific site is picked, I guess at the point of a 72-hour test, there would be a presentation specific to that project for any neighbors or anyone in the community who lived in the area and had specific questions about that specific test and that specific site outside of a, a general informational session for the community.
So A here is a one hit and B is case by case specifics locations.
Yeah.
We might want to just add some language to clarify that.
But isn't this what we already do? We report out on areas that, like, we've been doing it at the water treatment plant property for the last several months. We report out on sites that we're looking to do a test well, if it merits doing a test, then we report out on doing that test, and that's what village board meetings are for. Are these additional public informational sessions?
This is a reaction to the difficult conditions and difficult circumstances when the town and the DEP did water investigation. These are some things that weren't done on a regular basis, and these were the recommendations of how we make sure as we go forward with water investigation, we make sure that our public is fully informed, that they have public sessions, as happened after the fact with Plains Road. After there were problems, hydrologists came and gave, and gave public presentations with engineers, but it happened after the fact. This is a procedure to say these, these sessions will happen before there's any possible bad outcomes, so people are reassured, they can present their concerns.
Yeah, maybe we can invite Ted Nizza to a meeting, because I don't really understand how this works.
After six months of talking about this?
Yeah, I continue to, I read that, I don't understand it.
What I hear from you, Tim, is that sort of some of this is embedded in what we do already, and I'm wondering if, and I, sorry, sorry, I completely spaced this. We have lots of things that we've decided, you know, we've kept things as permanent agenda items. Can some of this be filled in with permanently having, I mean, it sort of is, maybe we're just not saying it that way, and maybe it would be helpful to the public to say on every meeting, we're going to have an update, I don't know, it's kind of weird, maybe it's just semantics, I don't know. Because every meeting, we do a little bit of A and B, at least we have since I've been on the board, and those are public meetings. So if this is additive, I think we should, we should, that needs to be sort of clearly articulated, and I would also suggest that since it is additive, that we should talk about the fact that we, to a certain extent, we already are doing this, if that makes any sense.
Well, it was your position that we pass this as a separate procedure. We have the...
Yeah, yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I'm agreeing with that. I'm just saying in the language here, it should, I'll work on suggestions based on...
No, the Environmental Policy Board will meet tomorrow, so if that's, that's language you won't work on.
Yeah, if Ted wants to come and chat with us, because I talk to Ted pretty regularly, I meet him for coffee, we talk about things all the time. He's an amazing resource, we're lucky to have him. But I just, I would love to hear, he's inserted form created by Ted. I want to hear Ted explain this, because when I read this, I don't understand it.
Well, that's, firstly, Ted is one, one member of the Environmental Policy Commission, so rather than saying you'd like to hear from Ted, I think the entire commission would like to inform you. Secondly, to raise these issues, why are we even talking this, about this, you don't understand this, six months after this recommendation was brought to the board?
Nobody's questioning intent. I'm sorry to interrupt. I understand intent, you're, you're talking about what are the details here, and you're talking about intent. We need to, we need to meet here, and here I sit between you. I totally get the intent, and it's very good intent, and I don't think anybody at this table disagrees the intent.
Yeah, but we already do.
So let's formalize it.
Okay. And I think it would be helpful to...
But if we're formalizing it by adding two additional information sessions, are those like additional meetings? Like, what is that? Like, I thought we already do this in village board meetings.
Now, the model that has been used over and over again in this community, I mean, there's a precedent, we're not talking anything that hasn't been done many, many times, is that there is a time set aside, the public is invited, there's notice in the newspaper and notice on Facebook, there's notice at board meetings, the public who has interest in this issue comes to these meetings, the expert is there, and they have their questions answered. It's not, that's what we have always done. It's unfortunately, we have not always done it before the fact, we've done it after the fact, but how we do this is well established. So I will recommend to the Environmental Policy Board that we tighten up the language a little further on those points. And again, the modified version will be sent to the board and to the clerk's office and the assistant. I'd like to get this on the next agenda for discussion and possible passage.
I'll try to read it, you know, even before you mean tomorrow that Ted comes.
Okay. And the next item, and I had sent emails on this that didn't make it into the, into the package, there were two recommendations. One, that special meetings of the board are filmed and recorded.
Thought we did that.
Good, well, I'd like to...
Or at least I thought we instructed Alberta to figure out where that goes.
Yeah, there was a special meeting, not the most recent one, but the one prior to that, where there were no, I actually filmed it myself.
Right.
So I'd like to have as part of our procedure. This is something that we do, so that it's written down somewhere as someone's responsibility.
We also had a special meeting the other day that was not filmed.
Well, that's, that's a problem, you know, so I think it's, I think that's a problem.
It's not really a problem. We're legally required to provide minutes to meetings, and that's what we did.
I think there is something that we do in this community that goes above the legal requirements. It's practice of all our boards and councils to have a video document. If you have the equipment there, it doesn't require anyone to come and do anything but set the microphone and press the button, so it's, you know, I, it concerns me that that's not our priority, and I think it should be. So I'm looking to have that included in the board operating procedures.
If you, I think we already voted last time to do that, so I don't know if we ever filed through on that. Alex, can we just ask Alberta, if we haven't already, to find the place where we would put that in the operating procedures? And then I guess we just need to keep it on our radar that we do that when we have special meetings.
And the last point, second point is...
I'm just bringing it up, that we had a special meeting a week or two ago, and it was not filmed. That's all.
Well...
Practice and also leaves, leaves us open to criticism in situations where it normally wouldn't apply, because then people say, oh, well, why wasn't it videotaped? People's suspicions immediately get raised, even when there's, you know, I'm sure the special meeting last week had nothing curious in it, but as soon as it's not...
It was like one of those super quick ones, but yeah, it just like, again...
Consistency, best practice.
Yeah, I don't think any of us disagree with that. I think Tim was just saying we did it, and maybe we need to just remember when we do stuff like that.
And lastly, I had a bunch of verbiage, but I think it's very simple just to say, put as our operating procedures, with regard to public hearings, the board will adhere to the recommendations in the New York State Guidelines of Conducting Public Meetings and Public Hearings. And the specific points that are outlined and specified in this handbook is that when people are speaking at public hearings, they will not be interrupted, there will be no rebuttals and no debates, that people at board tables certainly can ask questions and request additional information, but it specifically discourages interruptions and debates and rebuttals. And I just printed out these two pages that those, these are the pages which would deal with those specific issues. But for the purposes of this board, I would just like to move that the board will adhere to the New York State Handbook on Conducting Public Meetings and Public Hearings.
Can we just back up a little bit? Because I feel like the reason that you're bringing this up, and you've done this several times, when there's a public comment and, and the comment ends up being conversational, you object to some sort of conversation with people who make public comments? And I feel like we need to have that flexibility. Sometimes it makes sense to have folks speak for longer periods of time, sometimes it makes sense to have conversations when, when folks are making public comments. I mean, you have to have some sort of flexibility when you're, when, when we're running meetings.
Well, I'm talking about public hearings, not public comments, they're two different things. And again, I'm not making anything up, it's not a personal preference, it's in the handbook, the New York State Handbook on Conducting Public Hearings, that speakers should not be interrupted, there should be no debate and rebuttals, and that if board members have any questions, they leave them to the end when the person's finished speaking. This is not my opinion, this is what New York State recommends, and I had made that point verbally at a public hearing, and had seen in an email a quote from this, this document, which used the sentences that, that argued against my position, but ignored the sentence before and after those sentences, which said, you should not interrupt, you should not debate. And those comments, just the partial comments that were critical of me, made it into New Palt's Times in exactly the same wording. And so I would like to push back and say, this handbook says more than that. This handbook says more than board members should, can ask questions and gather information, it specifically says, board members should not interrupt, should not debate, and should not rebut.
Yeah, that's the recommendation. And I think we, we should not be rude if someone's making a public comment, and if we're running board meetings, that's on us to not be rude.
Well, then we're in complete agreement on that, and, and so that's why I have made this recommendation, to include this in the board operating procedures. It's what we go by anyway.
Yeah, I feel like it's already covered in our board policy, so we don't need to, you know, every meeting, add new stuff to policy that we have already covered.
We have already covered it, but we're not following it. It's not our practice, and so I think...
And that's why we disagree.
No, we don't disagree, it's a fact, whether people are interrupted and debated or not, that's, that's knowable, that's factual, that's on tape. And you specifically said, when I pointed out, we're going to handle it differently.
Correct.
Okay, well, that's, that's in opposition to the recommendation on, that was cited to me from New York State on how you conduct public hearings.
Are you calling a question?
I am making the motion that we amend our board operating guidelines on those two points. Number one, to say special meetings will be filmed and recorded for posterity as all other meetings are, and number two, that the board will adhere to the New York State Handbook on Conducting Public Meetings and Public Hearings.
Is there a second? Okay, no second, let's move on.
I'd like the motion that we record, that we add to our operating procedures that we record all special meetings.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. I motion we move building claims.
Snooker?
All in favor?
Aye.
And then we have...
Seasonal winter...
I motion we authorize hiring Devon Pritchard and to rehire Todd Matthews for two winter seasonal snow shoveler positions at the rate of $18 an hour.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Was that it?
Um, we did retro. We did workshop, I think that's it. We don't have Mark, so...
That was it?
Move to adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.